Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you for being here on a beautiful summer evening. We're very happy to have candidates for all city council races in the Missoula City this evening. We'll hear from two panels. The first panel will be wards one through three, and then we'll hear from the candidates in wards four through six. We're delighted that you're here. We, as the party of Democrats in Missoula, like to have these forums in order to help people understand the issues. All the candidates have filled out questionnaires, which are available on our website for the public to review and also for our own purposes. At the conclusion of this forum, we'll adjourn the meeting and then have our business meeting. At that time, what we'll do is have endorsements in these races for any candidates that the party wishes to endorse. We do this for the purpose of helping voters make a decision, so we offer our idea about whom we would like, whom we like in our endorsement, and also to help devote our resources to the candidates that we endorse. We can choose to endorse one of the candidates, all the candidates in the race, or none of the candidates. So with no further ado, what we're going to do is go ahead and start with the candidates' opening statements. They just get two minutes, and we'll start at this end with Gwen Jones.
So I need to turn this on?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Testing. Okay. Good evening. My name is Gwen Jones. I'm running for city council in Ward Three. I grew up in Missoula. I left for 20 years when I went away to college and worked outside in Montana, and I moved my family back here 11 years ago because I simply could not envision raising my children anywhere but in Missoula, Montana. So I'm so pleased and lucky to be able to run for Ward Three. As I was thinking about the major issues facing Missoula in the next four years, besides mountain water, which I totally support, I think the main issue is going to be a lot of growth and development happening in Missoula. I have lived in places where there has been great demand rapidly and fast growth, and it never ages very well, frankly. And I'm hoping that Missoula seizes this pivotal time in the next four years, as there's a lot of growth, to do as best a job as possible in terms of putting good growth in that is community-oriented, that is well-done, that is aesthetically pleasing, so that we continue to make Missoula a very, very special place. And as a balancing act to the growth that is coming into Missoula, I think we need to maintain our focus on making Missoula affordable for everyone who does want to live here, because I've also lived in places where there has been wonderful growth, wonderful management of growth, and people have been outpriced. So I think we need to focus on maintaining affordable housing as best we can and valuing and funding our social services, so that everyone who lives in Missoula can have a quality experience here and a good quality of life. So, in a nutshell, there's many other things to discuss, but I think that's the main issue facing Missoula, and those are my thoughts on it. Thank you very much.
So Gwen is running for city council in Ward Three.
Yes.
Next, we'll hear from Aileen, who is running in Ward Two. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aileen Inman, and I am lucky enough to be running for Ward Two. My story, I was also raised in Missoula. I moved here when I was 11 months old after I escaped some adversity with domestic violence and was saved by the YWCA. And through my wonderful and blessed life while I've been in Missoula, I was able to actually become more of a community advocate and see how strong Missoula is as far as its services and its different programs that are all meant to just make Missoulian growing up here lead the most enriching and prosperous life that they're able to, no matter what adversities or privileges they are lucky enough to have or not so lucky to have. My hopes for being on city council would be to bring a perspective of a young student that makes up a lot of our population here in town, obviously with the University of Montana, as well as a person of color, because looking in, there's a lot of experience that I've had in Missoula that I think through community advocacy and going out and actually being able to talk to our politicians and be able to meet with different community leaders, such as organizational leadership or different programs such as that, that we're able to actually make a better community. And I would love to do so through affordable housing and take a stance in partnership with the city work already on sexual assault and creating some sort of program and just make it even better, because Missoula's taken so many strides to make it a better and more safe community, and I'm just happy for the opportunity to be able to build it and make it a better place. Thank you.
As you're listening, if you have questions you would like to ask, please go ahead and fill out a piece of paper. If you don't have a piece of paper, raise your hand, we'll get you one. And next, we'll hear from Jack Brown, who's also a candidate in Ward Two.
Exactly. Hi, everyone. My name is Jack Rowan, and I'm running for Ward Two. And I moved to Missoula 21 years ago to get my degree at the University of Montana with the intention, I grew up in central Arizona, and I had the intention of going back, but I got into what I call the Missoula vortex, and never mind. 21 years later, I've been involved in a number of things in Missoula. I've served on boards of directors for many nonprofits, been involved in organizations such as Home Resource, that have really helped me get to know Missoula in a way that I would not have even imagined when I came here 21 years ago, interacting with very diverse populations within Missoula through the work that I've done at Home Resource, serving on the board of directors for the Missoula Urban Demonstration Project. I also work with an organization called Family Promise, addressing homelessness for families within Missoula. There's a number of other organizations of which I've been involved that I think have broadened my experience and the issues to which I am aware of that many Missoulians face on a day-to-day basis. One of the reasons why I felt that this is the time that I need to get involved and put my name forward to run for city council is noticing that with the upcoming election, there will not be any incumbents running again. The nature of the council is about to change dramatically, and I feel that the years of experience that I have in Missoula, as well as the perspectives that I've gained, will help to bring some institutional knowledge that will help carry forward some stability as well as new ideas. I grew, as I mentioned, I grew up in central Arizona in a town called Sedona, which, when I was born and raised there, it was mostly cattle country and apple orchards, and in the years while I was in high school, it transformed into a boom town. I see some of those elements happening in Missoula, and it's something that is very important to me to try to address, to maintain the character of Missoula into the future as best we can.
Thanks. I'm Jack Rowan. Sorry about that. Next, we'll hear from Anita Green, who is also in Ward Two, who's our third candidate from Ward Two.
Hi, my name is Anita Green, and I am running for city council in Ward Two. So just a little bit about myself, and I told Aileen I would clarify this, I am the second youngest person to be running for city council. Aileen is technically the youngest by a few months. I told her I would clarify that for her. So I am the second youngest person to run for city council. I am 24 years old. And what am I hoping to do if I am elected onto city council? Well, I want to be a member of Missoula City Council, because I want to help continue to guide Missoula down a progressive path. I am the first and so far only openly transgender person to ever run for public office in Missoula, and I think that that's really important to Missoula, because I think that it would add diversity to Missoula City Council, and that's why I'm open about that. My top three objectives for city council would be to support Missoula's decision to own its own water, push for the institution of inclusionary zoning, and I would also like to see the institution of a wet shelter and/or a wet housing. I think that a lot of people have been concerned about my age and looking at my age as an experience, but I would just like to say to them that I actually think that I have quite a bit of experience. I have interned with organizations such as Mom Hurt in Fullland, Montana. I was elected onto the ASM Senate, and I've received a lot of experience with that, and I hope that people will continue to have faith in me and not look at my age as a barrier, but as something that is going to contribute and as something special to Missoula City Council. Thank you.
Thanks, Anita. Next, we'll hear from Bill Murray, running for Ward One, one of two candidates in Ward One.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bill Murray, and I know I'm the oldest person running for a position here. I turned 73 last March, okay? I've lived in Missoula off and on for over 35 years. I've owned four homes in Ward One, and I'm currently living on Timber Lane Street. Excuse me. I am an independent. I have views on, you know, many, many issues, and I certainly believe in, you know, the social good that we do and the Democrats' support. I would certainly support that. But I'm a taxpayer, and I've been really feeling the pinch in my pocketbook, and I think pocketbook issues have to be discussed. And I really firmly believe we have to take a look at wants versus needs, and if I'm successful at attaining a position, I will do everything I can to be a guardian of the taxpayers' dollar. I also want to look ahead and do what's right for Missoula. So we have to think about the future, the transportation issues, the certainly annexation of various parts of a growing city. You have to look at that seriously, but I want to look at each and every one of these issues that it pays to do it. It's not just a feel-good thing. So if I'm successful, I'll be an advocate for everybody, and I want to bring inclusion to all councilors so they talk to one another. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we'll go from Heidi West, who is another candidate in Ward One. Please go ahead.
All right, so I'm Heidi West. I'm running for Ward One, and I came to Missoula in 2009, following my husband, who had accepted an AmeriCorps Vista term for the Missoula Urban Demonstration Project. And we were supposed to stay one year and move back to Stillwater, Oklahoma, where we both gone to college, and our families are still in Oklahoma. And like so many people that come to visit, I think we end up staying, because Missoula is an amazing community. We moved onto the MUD demonstration site, actually, and we have not strayed far in our multiple moves around the north side. And I want to run for city council, because I think I have a good idea of how unique this community is. I come from Oklahoma, where, you know, it's the remnants of the big oil boom, where our cities are sprawling, you can't walk anywhere, and they're not very people-friendly. And when you come here, you can walk places, there's outdoor recreation everywhere, and it's easily accessible to everyone, and that is something that's really important. And I'm very passionate that people of all socioeconomic backgrounds can stay in this community and live fulfilling lives while they're here. So I have two kids. They are seven and four, and my daughter is at Lowell. I'm currently the co-chair of the PTA there, and I've also had great opportunities to volunteer and intern with all sorts of organizations around town. So I've put the Zutan Arts Community Center and the Clay Studio in Missoula, and I've done the Volunteer for Bedges program for Garden City Harvest, and it's just been a great way of getting to know, you know, the resources that are available in this community, especially for young families. So, thank you.
Thank you all. That was great. We'll have some more questions from the audience now, and so if you haven't filled out a question, please feel free to pass it up in front. Please address your questions to all the candidates. The first question is, in the last five years, looking at what the city council has done, what, if anything, would you do differently, or would you have done differently, being in an office? So, and we'll start at this end. Heidi, please go ahead.
One minute, right?
One minute, yes.
Wow, that's a really tough question. You know, I've been really impressed with our city council. I think that they have picked some really difficult topics that can be a little bit controversial, like the water issue, and have really pulled together for the benefit of the future citizens of Missoula. And I don't know if there's many things I would say that I would want them to do differently. I think they're on a really good path, and I hope I can continue that.
There's several, well, I would say at least a couple issues I would have done differently. And one, I'd start with the water company. I believe that it's a good thing for Missoula to own their own water. I think what I would have done differently if I were on the council, I would have advocated a public vote for this, so that we're all in together. I think it's a huge burden to put on the people, the 12 people in the council, to make that decision, even though they represent all of us. I'd also look at SIDs in the same way. I think the vote of the people is very important to the way we govern. Thank you.
So, in the last five years, what would I have done differently? Well, one issue that I wasn't entirely sure if I agreed with city council on was the advancement of the Russell Street expansion. I actually agreed with Alex Taft on his stance. I think that it wasn't necessary to expand Russell Street. I do support, you know, supporting the infrastructure in Missoula, and I think that's probably the only issue that I really found that I just agreed with, because otherwise I've been pretty supportive of city council's decision.
Well, one issue that, three years ago, I would have done differently is that I did not agree with the decision to support Collins petition before the Public Service Commission in the first place. In retrospect, though, I recognize that I think it was that decision that actually made the recent court decision possible. I think if it hadn't been for that, we probably would have been another 10 years out at least before there had been movement towards public ownership of our water resources. So that's something I would have done differently, and I recognize now that I was wrong. Another thing that I would do differently is, I think the city's response to the Justice Department investigation regarding sexual assault has been admirable in many ways, but I think we have failed to address the larger issue of sexual assault in Missoula on a large scale. There's still the general perception that this is a university issue. It's not. It's a community-wide issue that we need to do more to address, and we need to look at ways that we can promote discussion that will go beyond just response once a sexual assault has occurred and been reported.
You know, I'd actually just like to echo Heidi's thoughts on that, when it comes to the decisions and all the choices that the city council members have had to make over the last five years, although, yes, there may be some that I don't entirely agree with, I'm also assuming that there is information that I'm not privy to, and I trust that the city council put as much thought into it as they possibly could. I mean, just like you said, with the water compact decision, although I didn't entirely agree with it at the beginning, in retrospect, I can see it. But as far as things, the Silver Park development and all of the new trail access, I grew up on the Milwaukee Trail, and that part between California and the railroad bridge was always a terrifying place for me, and now it's lit and a wonderful and beautiful place out there. So I'd say just actually have done that sooner, because now it is such a beautiful, very accessible place to go and explore.
For the most part, I agree with the directions the council has gone in, and as I have spent the last five, six months researching issues, things that I didn't understand before, frankly, now I have a better understanding of why the council went in. For example, a year ago, I couldn't quite figure out why Starbucks was getting extra money to put their landscaping in on Brooks, and now, yeah, I haven't looked into all of it. So that's great, but the one thing I would change, being an attorney, is I think when they went down the path of starting the mountain water acquisition, is setting expectations as to how expensive and how long it would take, because it's going to take quite a while longer, it's going to cost quite a bit more, not only in terms of attorney's fees, but in ultimate price. And I think all of that is absolutely necessary to be done. We need to do it, but it's hard to tell the public, "Well, we think it's going to be X amount of dollars," and then it's a lot more. So that was kind of a pivotal time. If there had been a little bit better job on setting expectations, I think it would have been a little bit easier now, but hindsight 2020.
Thank you. So for our next question, Mr. Darrell Green, and the question is, since affordable housing is a big issue in Missoula, what would you do to help reach a solution to this problem?
So I think we do have affordable housing in Missoula, but the question is, do we have enough? And are we getting the right types of housing for the right types of people? The other day, I went on the website for the Missoula Housing Authority, and they have 25 employees. This is a big, funded institution in Missoula, so there's affordable housing, but I think we still need to continue putting more affordable housing in as we grow as a community. So I'm glad to see, for example, the Sawmill District, there's going to be some affordable housing going in there, the Sweetgrass Commons. So every time there's a development, we can add some more affordable housing in. I think that's great. Wet housing would also be very useful in Missoula, and sometimes we need alternative housing for people who don't fit into the current existing programs. So as a community, if we can continue to look at those options, I think we will do the best we can with this issue.
Can you just explain to the audience what wet housing is? I've heard that a couple of times.
So the Pavarolo Center takes in people overnight, but people cannot be inebriated or on any type of substance. They can't be in any type of altered state, is my understanding. Wet housing would provide an area for those people to go, because otherwise, they're falling between the cracks, they're on the streets, they're in the riverbed. It's not a good situation. So some kind of housing so that they can get to a little bit better place and then start down the path where they need to go.
What I would like to see when it comes to affordable housing is, instead of bringing in more places than pushing people out, I would love to see midtown be built up, or places more central to Missoula be built with mixed-use housing. And so up on the top, there can be low-income housing, affordable housing, or even just regular fancy fine housing. And then in the bottom, it can have retail spaces that can create employment, as well as making those places accessible to bus lines or trail systems, so that it keeps our whole city all together and moving forward together. And, yeah, that's what I would like to see, is more mixed-use housing.
Thank you. One of the organizations that I've been involved with for a number of years is the North Missoula Community Development Corporation. Some people have positive associations with that, and some people don't. One of the things that we've set as an objective for trying to achieve affordable housing is public land trust housing. Establishing means by which, the biggest obstacle to affordable housing in Missoula is the price of land itself. There is not enough subsidies out there in order to create all the affordable housing that we need. So what we have done is we've established a mechanism by which a nonprofit organization owns the property and holds it in trust in perpetuity, so that the owners of the house are only acquiring the structure, and that allows us to bring down the cost of housing as well as get out of the cycle of trying to build structures where we have affordable housing and then we have market-grade housing, and we're separating our society into stratifications. With this model, we're seeking to build ways so that the community is integrated economically and culturally.
So, as far as affordable housing is concerned, I would tackle this issue through the institution of inclusionary zoning. And what that is, is when a developer comes in and develops a property, they can develop that property however they want. For example, if they choose to make that property geared towards higher income, people, they can do that. However, a certain percentage of that developed property has to be dedicated towards low-income people or affordable housing. Some examples of this are, Bozeman has instituted this, and that is because Bozeman actually has the highest housing rates in Montana. Missoula has the second highest housing rates. So Bozeman instituted this as a way of offsetting their astronomically high housing costs. San Francisco is also a wonderful example. I know it's a very different city, but it's also another example of a city that has instituted inclusionary zoning, and it has worked and helped boost the economy, and it is taken into consideration, everybody.
Affordable housing is attainable if we do a few things. I think look at tax abatement for certain types of housing, perhaps smaller housing, adjusting the fees, looking at cutting the cost of building. The other thing I would do, we have people in housing that own their homes or have small mortgages, and they're generally elderly. We have an 84-year-old neighbor. She's all by herself. Her tax bill's about $3,000 to $4,000 a year. She's hurting. I think we need to give a tax credit, maybe of some sort, 50% to elders over 65, and that would be something I'd advocate. Thank you.
So I think affordable housing is definitely an issue in our community. There are many different organizations that work on this issue, and I think as a city, we can help support those. We could also, you know, reevaluate maybe if wet zoning is appropriate for different neighborhoods. And I think there are many different mechanisms that more densely populated areas and cities are currently using to make housing more affordable that we could look at and maybe research and see if they're applicable to where we live. And I also think that we need to reevaluate our family structures, because a large proportion of our population now lives alone, they're single, especially our younger population, and we don't all need, you know, three-bedroom apartments and houses, and would probably be much happier with smaller spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. So for our next question, very simple, would you support a $15 an hour minimum wage so that Missoula is affordable for everyone? I'm sorry.
I would absolutely support a $15 minimum wage. I've been a stay-at-home mom for the last five years, and the biggest inhibitor to my getting a job is that I can't afford childcare on the wages that are offered. And that's a calculation that I know almost every family is having to do, and it's really heartbreaking, because there are so many talented, capable people out there that are priced out of the job markets, and that's something that needs to be accessible to everyone. And I think that the city raising the minimum wage for their employees sets a standard that private industry and small businesses are going to have to follow. Thank you.
I've owned three businesses and worked for many companies, and we've had low-wage people, and I think it's always a struggle for a low-wage person. The good thing is that some of these people can work their way up. I think as a goal, it would be a good thing to have a $15 an hour wage, but I would not put that in as a mandate. I believe we have to work towards better jobs and more opportunity, and I think that's the way to bring people up, get the education, get the trade schools, get the things going around here that will employ people. I think that, you know, if you look at a teacher, my wife has been a teacher, starting pay is $24,000 a year in some places with a BA. That's a lot less than $15 an hour. I'm not saying that's right, but we have to live with these things. We're in Montana, and the taxes are high. We're in Montana, and the taxes are high, and we have to figure out how we can get it done. Thank you.
So, this is kind of a complicated answer. So am I supportive of a $15 minimum wage increase? Yes, I am. However, this should be done so incrementally, and we should work up a little bit at a time, raise the minimum wage a little bit at a time, and slowly get our way towards having $15 an hour. It's hard to do so, and that's a very drastic jump from going to the current minimum wage and just going to $15 an hour. So it should be done incrementally, but in the end, I, of course, I do support a $15 per hour minimum wage, because that's actually a living wage. The current minimum wage is not a living wage, and I think it's important that we cater to everyone and do our best to make sure that everybody is being taken care of.
This is a loaded question. I don't know how to answer this. In a way that I feel is truly honest to how I feel, without sounding like I'm running for governor of Wisconsin. Honestly, I don't feel that minimum wage is the best mechanism by which we can ensure economic viability within the community. The federal minimum wage was stagnant for 30 years. When it started to increase, we also saw the cost of living increase in proportion to the increase in minimum wages. I'm not opposed to the minimum wage. I think it's absolutely critical that we establish an absolute minimum, and that we do not allow ourselves to continue, especially in the service sector, positions that are permanently inhibiting to people and limiting them in their ability to move up. However, I do see that minimum wage oftentimes has the impact of slowly rising overall costs.
Although I definitely do support a $15 minimum wage, I also understand that there are economic repercussions that I just don't understand how we would be able to afford that. But, at the same time, at least making living wage, especially for such a huge part of our economy, being students and working families just trying to actually make a living here, and make a life that they can actually stay and thrive here, and eventually maybe own their own house or start their own business here. And so, I also agree with Jack that, yes, minimum wage would be wonderful, but there's other ways to actually make that pathway to a better life easier. Things like making benefits for low-wage workers better, and going and creating, oh, I lost my train of thought. Well, making benefits like paid sick leave or maternity leave or other things, or perhaps an apprenticeship program where we can actually plug students straight into these jobs would be wonderful.
In general, I support raising the minimum wage. I don't know if Missoula would need to get up to $15 an hour, but I think a graduated approach would be good to gradually raise the minimum wage. I do think there would be exceptions to this, though, that would need to be addressed. I have two teenagers, and I totally support them working in the summer on a part-time basis, even if it's on a full-time basis, but they do not need to be making $15 an hour unless they are emancipated. So, there's a lot of little issues to address with it. I think it's a complex issue, and in general, I support it. I would have to spend more time really truly researching it to have a complete and 100% opinion on, but in general, it's a good idea, except for my teenagers.
A moment.
They're going to hate me.
So, last question is, Missoula pays its bills, the vast majority of its bills with property taxes and revenue from that. Do you support diversifying our funding sources through other means such as a county tax or a gas tax?
Can you talk to her again?
Oh, sorry. The question again is, Missoula has to pay a majority of its bills through property taxes? And do you support diversifying that tax base through other means like a gas?
So Montana is one of the few states that does not have a sales tax, and I think we should have a sales tax. It doesn't need to be eight cents per dollar like it is in California and other places, but it would spread the taxation around in a much better way. So yes, I would like to see something besides property taxes. I think it would make for a much healthier economy. Whitefish has the local option tax, but they are a small resort town, so they can do that. But, something like a gas sales tax or something along those lines would be very beneficial, I think, to spread the taxation around and create a healthier budget for Missoula. But the local option tax law would have to change, because right now it's for cities that are 5,000 or below, so Missoula doesn't fit into that category. But, maybe one of these years, the legislature will address some of these issues and move forward on sales taxes.
I absolutely do think that Missoula very much needs to diversify how we are actually making our tax revenue, especially with the tax burden being entirely on homeowners, virtually entirely on homeowners. I personally have worked on campaigns for the last five years or so on tech levies for school, on bond levies for school, or on bonds or on different levies, and although these issues are so incredibly important and absolutely necessary, I also understand that in the last five years or so, taxes on homeowners have increased exponentially, and I would love to be able to see a way that we can diversify it and make it so that our community and our schools and our overall infrastructure of our city can be stronger without having to be on the backs of the homeowners.
Thank you. I do support the idea of a gas tax. I believe that one of the largest elements of the current city budget is street maintenance and transportation infrastructure. The reason why I think a gas tax makes sense is because it generates the revenue directly from those who are using those resources. All of us, in one way, you know, I know very few people who only bicycle or walk. Most of us use automobile transportation in one form or another at one time. I think it would be a good way to make sure that the source for funding those needs within the city are addressed by those who are using the resources. And so I do support a gas tax.
So I think that it's important to diversify Missoula's taxes, and I'm supportive of a sales tax, because I think that this would provide essential funding to Missoula's infrastructure, and I think that it, just from a macroeconomic point of view, it would just help stimulate the economy and make it easier and take a lot of the burden off of homeowners.
Right now, taxes on homes and property are a big issue. You know, it affects renters as well as homeowners. And I believe some kind of local option tax might be acceptable. We have hundreds of thousands of tourists and visitors. We need to find a way to structure some kind of tax where we can find a way to have them pay a little bit as they use our roads and our services. I think this requires thought, but I believe we should work towards the goal of spreading it away from the homeowner and property owner, so housing and rent does not continue to rise the way it is. Thank you.
So I think diversifying our revenue sources is always a good idea, but I also think that, as I am a homeowner, I do appreciate the services that I get for my taxes. I think that there may be creative ways to, you know, get a greater financial benefit from people that come and visit our community. Maybe we could, you know, have a tax for vacation rentals that are taking up houses that could otherwise be rented by residents. Yeah, I guess that's the answer to my question, or your question.
Well, thank you. For the final round, what we'll do is, sorry, Heidi, we'll have a one-minute closing statement. If you need a prompt, you could just say your most important value that's related to how you would govern if you were elected. But you don't have to say that, you can talk about whatever you want. So, sorry, Heidi.
So, I actually really enjoy reading tedious paperwork. So, I think that I pay close attention to detail, and I, you know, weigh the personal cost and the public benefit, and try and make the best decisions for the community as a whole and for my neighborhood. And I really enjoy listening to my neighbors and finding out what they need and what they think our community needs, and trying to fight for it.
Did I, I'm sorry. One of the things I found as I get older, I have two ears and one mouth, so we should listen more. I really think listening to the people is important. I think including all the people in the things that we do is very important. I believe in collaboration with our neighbors and the different needs and wants that they have is important. And I believe watching that tax dollar and how we spend the money. I believe reforming some of the way we buy things, some of the things that go out to bid. I would say anything over $100,000 mandatory goes out to bid, that's a big-ticket item. We've got to watch the dollars, and I think we've got to get control of our fiscal issues. Thank you.
Well, just to reiterate what I've already said, I would like to institute many things in this, but I'm particularly passionate about inclusionary zoning. I live in World Two, and that has a dichotomy of very wealthy and a lot of low-income people. And I would just like to give the low-income community a more voice. I think that they have been missing a voice, and I think that everybody's voice deserves to be heard. And I just want to be able to provide representation as best as I can and really listen to the people in my work.
Two things that I want to address that I feel like I didn't say as clearly as I would like to. One is that with the gas tax, I think that the importance of it would be that it would be proportional to the amount of use. And I think that's important, because we need to do more that creates very immediate incentives to use our infrastructure in a different way. For too long, we, not just in Missoula, but in the United States, have been planning our future, assuming that our current uses are going to continue in perpetuity and maybe even expand. We need to change that, and we need to take a hard look at how our infrastructure is going to be used if we reach, when we reach a point that cheap gas is no longer the way that we drive our economy. That's one of the chief things that I think I would like to be a part of addressing as we move forward as a community.
For the last few years, for the last few years, or I think more specifically five years, I've been lucky enough to be grassroots organizer here in Missoula, and be able to actually go out and advocate for different policy reforms and empower Missoulians to be able to actually see and understand what systems are in place, how they're affecting them, and how to make it so that they can actually lead a better life. And through those skills that I was able to glean in my professional development, as well as being raised in different nonprofits all around town, I believe that the value that I bring to the table is that I have so much passion and dedication and love of Missoula, especially because I have lived outside Missoula and I always find myself coming back. And especially when it comes to how accessible our politicians are, how accessible are, you can just see Missoula's soul being, just growing from community buy-in and community participation, and every time I come back, it just gets better and better. And now, I've made the decision to stay and make the community the best place that I can. I'm very excited to get started.
So for the last 10 years, I have spent a huge amount of time volunteering in this town. I work part-time as an attorney, and frankly, volunteering is more interesting than some of the appeals that I write. So, I have spent a lot of time volunteering, and it was a way of being involved in my kids' lives. I volunteered in schools a ton, volunteering in the classroom, I wrote grants for the schools, administered programs. I have been involved in youth sports, Missoula Lacrosse Club, and the last two years in the Neighborhood Council. And I'm so grateful for those 10 years, because it's given me so much experience in terms of working with a body of people, having an issue to deal with, how are you going to figure it out, what are the right questions to ask, what information do you need? And what I learned about myself was, I like to make decisions that are good in the long term. What's going to work in the long term? Usually it's harder, and it takes more work, but that's my personality, and that's what came out, and I'm looking forward to, if serving on the council, bringing those tools to the table. So, thank you.
Thank you all of the candidates for doing this, and especially thank you for just stepping up and being willing to serve. Thank you very much. Good luck, Heidi.